Call of officers, please.
Commissioner Odanga.
Here.
Commissioner Lear.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Acosta.
Present.
Vice Chair Zerniak.
Here.
Chair Zargis.
Here. Approval or changes to the agenda, look for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Zerniak, second by Commissioner Lear. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved, approval of minutes for the planning board meeting of May 22nd, 2025.
I move to approve the planning and zoning commission regular meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2025.
I second it.
Commissioner Lear moves, Commissioner Fisher seconds, approval of the minutes of May 22nd, 2025. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Old business. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Case. We're looking for case number on here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, we're having a few computer issues due to the electrical surges we had yesterday. So we're getting a slower delay this morning.
Oh yeah.
Trying to download some issues for IT. So if you can give us maybe three minutes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess for a couple minutes here.
Unless you want to switch the order of the agenda. Start with Charlene.
We begin to adjourn, miss.
8:45 North North Tower Boulevard, Los Cruces, New Mexico, 88007.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Next slide. Okay, this is item agenda 5C, Z25011. And the owner applicant is Benjamin Abeda. Location is 375 Dusty Lane in the Village of Doniana. The zoning is T3, and he's requesting a zone change to T4 general neighborhood. For an RV park, electric charging stations, and food truck parking. This is location map. And this is the aerial photo. And this is the zoning map. Okay, the description of the property is 0.54 acres, located in a T3 neighborhood, and is currently vacant. The subject property was originally zoned in the ETC as EV village zone. Intended to allow the existing unincorporated places to continue to develop in the same manner as they did. They have in the past within the context of district zoning. The village zone was defined as unincorporated places that have fairly dense residential areas mixed with commercial activities. That have established for a long time with possible historical significance and have a sense of community and self-identity. On February 2nd, 2017, the UDC was adopted by the BOCC. The surrounding areas mixed use with single-family residential, mobile home parks, and multifamily and commercial businesses. There were two mobile homes on the property that were removed and currently the property is vacant. Next slide. On April 21st, 25, the applicant Benjamin Tia Beta submitted the zone change request to operate an RV park. For five spaces with a bathroom and shower facility, four electric charging stations, and food truck parking on the property. This is the site plan. And you, okay, this is the, sorry, thank you, Will. This is, this is for the, there's the RV, the parking is right there, oh, you can see it. And the charging stations. Next slide. This is the aerial of the area. Next slide. And this is the notification map. Next slide. This is the subject property, and it's taken facing west. Next slide. And this is another photo of the property. And this is Thorpe Road East, and this is right at the intersection of La Desma. And towards the interstate, it's 100 to 120 feet right away from La Desma on down. It's 80 feet, I believe. Next slide. This is Dusty Lane. It's 30 feet right away, and it's county maintained. Next slide. This is the notification sign. Next slide. And this is surrounding property, right across the street on Dusty Lane is the Fourplex, which was approved in 2020. Next slide. And this is the post office, it's right at the intersection of Dusty Lane and La Desma. It's right there in the corner where the property is at. Next slide. And these are commercial businesses and single-family residential across Thorpe. And zone change evaluation requirements, the 350104C3 duties of planning and zoning commission. General notice requirement, zone changes and decisional criteria. Next slide. Thirty-one letters of notification were mailed to the property owners within the area of notice on May 9th, 2025. One email of opposition was received. Legal ads were placed in the Los Cruces Sun News on May 11th, 2025. Signs were posted on the property in a timely manner, agenda was posted on the DAC website. Next slide. Potential number of homes, no homes are proposed. The population, there will not be any increase in population. There will be no impact to demographics. Potential traffic flows and impacts, direct access to Thorpe Road, New Mexico 320 shall be approved by permit from New Mexico DOT District 1 office. An analysis may need to be done to determine if the change will adversely affect New Mexico 320 Thorpe Road. A driveway permit will be required from Doniana Engineering Department if they have access to Dusty Lane. Next slide. The zone change will allow the applicant to have a commercial business for an RV park, electric charging stations, and parking for food trucks. Water and wastewater is available for Doniana Mutual Domestic Water. Existing infrastructure, there is sufficient infrastructure capacity for the proposed use. Parking and accessibility will be provided on the property. Thorpe Road is a state-maintained road, and it's a collector, major collector. And Dusty Lane is a paved 30-foot county-maintained road. Next slide. There has been no evidence submitted there are endangered rare species or animals and plants, life in the area. Although I did see some nice little plants out there, took pictures of them. The property is surrounded by residential uses, commercial development is across the street on Thorpe Road and La Desma Drive. The applicant will implement the best practices as identified in the UDC. And he will require a pre-app meeting. Next slide. For the comprehensive plan, it meets the goals of G 2.2, ensure regulations support the plan requirements. G 6.7, support regional small-scale businesses, including agriculture, encouraging manufacturing in other industries. G 610, keep money from leaking out of the county. A 610, plug the leaks in sales and services. A 610, plug in leaks and sales. That, G 611, protect and enhance the county market for goods and services. Next slide. This is our Miller criteria. And we think that it meets two of the criteria. B, sufficient change in conditions. The area is developing as mixed land use with single-family, multifamily, and small-scale commercial uses. In addition, the use of electric vehicles and demand for electrical charging stations in close proximity to the interstate is driving the change. And C, a different land use category is more advantageous to the community. The requested zone change will be more advantageous to the community, and it's not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. The zone change is an attempt to change the parcel zoning to a compatible use that are consistent with the surrounding areas and lot sizes. Next slide. Decisional criteria, the applicant has a burden of overcoming presumption that the current zoning district designation is the most appropriate designation. The area is evolving with small local businesses interspersed with residential uses. And decisional criteria, D8, a proposed zone change that requires major unprogrammed capital expenditures. The development cost will be borne by the property owner. C, D9, the access to the property is from Thorpe Road, a state-maintained major collector. And La Desma Drive to Barala Drive is 50 feet right away. Dusty Lane is 30 feet. D10, strip zoning is not proposed or considered for this development. Next slide. Spot zoning, the zone change is low-impact and is a small-scale commercial request. And C, the zone change is not spot zoning, will be consistent with the surrounding zoning of T4, C1, and C2. The proposed zone change promotes a low-impact use. The property size is 0.54 acres, and there will be benefit to the community by increasing the availability of small businesses in the area. By providing electric charging stations. Next slide. These are the businesses that are across Thorpe Road, on both sides of Thorpe Road, that you can just see from the area. And it's Doniana Mutual Domestic Water, La Finka Meat Market, The Matchbox, Family Dollar, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Dollar General, Circle K, Chucky's. Chachi's Mexican Food, and United States Post Office. Next slide. The property is outside of any incorporated municipal zoning authority, so that UDC has jurisdiction over this case. The request of the application is consistent with the requirements of the UDC. The zone change request for T4 does satisfy 350203D decisional criteria. The area is developing as mixed use with single-family and multifamily and commercial uses. The zone change to T4 is not considered spot zoning. Next one. The zone change will not be in significant conflict with the comprehensive plan, and we've gone over these already. Next slide. Staff recommendations, based on the findings of fact, staff analysis and agency comments. Staff recommends conditional approval of case number Z25011 from T3 to T4. To be consistent with the surrounding land uses and zoning district with the following conditions. Access to Thorpe Road shall be approved by New Mexico DOT driveway permit. Access to Dusty Lane is prohibited due to proximity of intersection. And turn radius for RVs will be provided on-site. This concludes my presentation.
Questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, I hope, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There was, on page 25 of 34. On staff analysis, is there a typo here on the, on the second paragraph? It says, "Staff believes that the requested zone change does not meet the requirements of this section."
That's a typo, yes.
It is.
It does meet.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from the commission? We hear from the applicant.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record. Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. I have a question. When this project was, when I met with staff, it was going to be phased, so it was two different phases. First phase was the RV park, and then the second phase was the charging station. My question today is, the restrooms, would the restrooms be required on phase one?
Yes, they will.
They would be required in phase one?
They will, we just adopted that in July of last year.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, restrooms are required for RV parks.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Anything you'd like to say, anything you would like to say in support of the project or going forward?
Well, you know, I think the purpose of this project is to, you know, bring a service to Doniana. I think it's something that's needed, there's not any RV parks in the area on that side of the county. And I'm hoping to do something good for the community, as well as people that are needing a place to hang their hat for the night or two.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant?
The, the site plan shows access to Dusty Lane. Is that just something that hasn't been corrected?
The main ingress and egress is through Thorpe. The county is going to require another exit point through Dusty, but that's not going to be, that's not going to be intended use for every day. It's just going to be for either emergency purposes, things like that. So we won't be using that unless it's an emergency.
Okay. How do you do that? Do they chain, do they chain the access with a key given to the fire marshal? Maybe we can ask, because I know we've done that before. It would look, be very tempting for that one RV in the corner to just go out that.
Well, well, if you, if you look at the elevation difference, I don't think the RVs would want to use that as an exit point. I mean, it's a little steep, but I think we might have to do some modifications to it. But, I mean, I'd be willing to accommodate whatever the county needs as far as, you know, putting a gate or some sort of mechanism to deter that use.
We could hear from the county fire marshal, and then we, we can hear from him for just a minute, and that addresses our concern with that.
Good morning, please state your name and address for the record. Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
The question is on the site plan. There's a driveway with access to Dusty Road, planning prohibits access to Dusty Road, and their recommendations. We're wondering if the county fire marshal has been out there and can make a recommendation on how to block off that area. We've done this in the past, I guess.
Yes, sir, so we haven't been out there. During our meeting that we had with the applicant, we did tell him that he needed a primary access point. And a secondary access point for emergency vehicles. So that would serve as a sort of a crash gate for emergency vehicles in the event that the primary access is blocked for any reason.
So you, it's just built so that you can go through it if you have to?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
Are there questions?
Commissioners, that, that recommendation was made because of the width of Dusty Lane. It's 30 feet, and it would be hard to have a turn radius for the RVs. That's the reason for that.
But that doesn't, but that doesn't preclude emergency vehicles from using it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
That's all I have, sir.
Any other members of the public with a comment on this case? Has anybody signed up over there, Arlene?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Look for a motion. We'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to conditionally approve case number Z twenty five dash zero one one, zone change from T three to T four with the following conditions. Access to Thorpe Road shall be approved, sorry, NM dot driveway permit. Access to Dusty Lane is prohibited due to proximity to intersection and the turn radius for the RVs will be provided onsite.
Just one other thing, provision of a crash gate on Dusty Road?
Yeah. Access to Dusty Lane prohibited, except with the exception of a crash gate. Can we add that to your?
Yep, I'll amend my motion to include that.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lear, seconded by Commissioner Zerniak for conditional approval on case Z twenty five zero one one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Orunga?
Yes.
Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes. Z twenty five zero eleven is passed. Are we electronically up for Christopher?
Morning, commissioners. Morning, Chair.
Can I make one comment, one question regarding this previous case? There was a lot of discussion about transect zones way back when we were doing the UDC. I tend to oppose any transect zone changes, but we voted on this one because it's there. And I'm wondering what plans are further to work more to getting some of these transects. Like, that's, that's a pretty developed area now that it wasn't ten years ago, about moving these transect zones back into use zones. Just something that's keeping in the back of our heads, I think. Because that was something we worked on years ago and it's sort of fallen off. Okay. Having had my two cents?
Good morning.
Christopher.
Morning, morning, Chair.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Valencia, eight forty five North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have item five A, Z twenty five zero zero eight, next. The owner applicant is Kenneth R. and Vicky L. Thurston, revocable trust and Moon Gate Water Company. They're located, this project is located at seventy eight fifty Holman Road in northeast of Los Cruces in a D three zone. It's for a zone change on eleven point thirty seven acres for a limited commercial development that will serve as a buffer to Holman Road and the residential area to achieve the appropriate zoning for existing utility infrastructure in compliance with the zoning requirements of the UDC. Next. Here we have the location map. Mouse isn't working, but it's right there. It's subject parcel, the east side of Holman. Other side is Amber Mesa subdivision. Next, please. Here's the aerial photo. It's the eleven point three seven acres there on the east side of Holman. Next. It's three different parcels. The larger red is, and it's not anything based off of zone, this is just red, yellow, and blue. Red is seven point three acres, three point five seven in the middle, and then the half acre from Moon Gate that was donated for the full eleven point three seven acres. Next. Prior to February second, twenty seventeen, the subject parcel was zoned ER seven C conditions, which was a zoning district to encourage variety of housing types at moderately high densities together with appropriate community facilities. Mobile homes and septic tanks are not allowed in that district. The subject parcels are located along the east side of the Holman Road to the far west of Inspiration Heights subdivision. To the north of the property is the proposed Luna Vista Road, which will be a private maintained road. From the intersection of Holman Road, north Blue Topaz and proposed Luna Vista Road, half a mile south is the intersection of Holman and Arroyo Road. All online imagery depicts the subject parcels as vacant and free of development. In two thousand and five, a zone change from EH to ER seven C was approved. The development on Inspiration Heights subdivision began in two thousand and seven with phase one, where twenty nine homes were constructed. Phase two began in two thousand and eight with thirty four, and phase three is under construction right now. Next. There's three separate parcels will be combined to create the eleven zone change that will be commercially developed. The first parcel involved with the zone change is R one nine zero eighty nine forty one, which is a hundred and thirty five acres, acre tract, phase five A plat recorded on two thousand and fifteen. That's owned by Kenneth and Vicky Thurston Revocable Trust. The second parcel, which is a three point five seven acres, is further known as tract A of Inspiration Heights, also owned by the Thurston Revocable Trust. And the third is the half acre I mentioned earlier about Moon Gate, which was donated for the wells and utility infrastructure. Next. Here's the zoning map. All of Inspiration Heights is a D three zone, and then across the street of Holman, you see there the Amber Mesa, and that's all D one with pockets of commercial on the intersections, and about half a mile north is a C two. The request is a zone change of eleven acres, zone D three to C two, to allow community commercial uses that will serve the area and be a buffer to Holman Road and the residential area and to achieve appropriate zoning for the existing utility infrastructure in compliance with the zoning requirements of the UDC. Next. Here's the Inspiration property, and this is showing you the plat of Inspiration Heights. The eleven acres here are the far west of the property. In the very south, there's already, you can see phases one, two, and three are still, are being built. Well, I'm sorry, phases one and phases two have been built, and now they're working on phase three. Next. Here is the Inspiration Heights subdivision plat to show the one through seventeen phases. And where they're at right now, which I have a mouse, phase three right now is under construction. They're moving on to phase four, five, and the rest through eight. Next. Land use aerial. Next. Right off of Highway seventy and Holman Road, this is looking south. You can see Highway seventy and looking north, you're about one point four mile away from the subject property. Simple two lane road. Here, this is about quarter mile north from that intersection. This is Melody subdivision. This is where the road sort of gets larger so you can have a turnoff radius into the subdivision there on Stanley Road. And at that intersection, as well as Peachtree Hills, that's exactly one mile from the subject property. At the subject property of Arroyo Road, looking west, then looking east behind us, which is already constructed, and then north of on Holman Road, that intersection, they're already starting construction. In that corner, you can see the half acre by Moon Gate. Next. This is the half acre on Arroyo Road. Next. So the first entrance on of the proposed, well, the proposed development, there is an entrance from Holman Road. Across the street is the development of Amber Mesa, and there's no intersection there. Just kind of just showing you the relationship of existing construction and the new development. This is the north of the project, subject property of Blue Topaz and Holman Road. There is a cell tower there and then a lift station, which we'll probably use in the future, but this is the proposed area. Next. And our notification signs for the zone change. Next. These are zone change evaluation requirements and decision criteria. Next. And three hundred feet from the, from the subject parcel, this is the area of notification. Forty eight letters were sent out. Next. Forty eight letters were sent on notification that were mailed on May sixteenth. There was no letters of opposition. Many calls have just kind of wanted to ask what it was, what it was about, and I explained to them. The legal ads were placed in the paper on May eleventh, and the signs are posted in a timely manner. Next. This request does not propose any additional homes since it's a commercial development. There is no change or impact on the current or existing population. The demographics of proposed land use zone for C two for the subject parcels will not have any significant change or impact on the current existing demographics of the area of Doña County. There are no major impacts to traffic flows are anticipated as Holman Road is already a minor arterial. A de-acceleration lane in this vicinity is being, is being constructed with the Inspiration Heights, and the need for further acceleration and/or de-acceleration lanes will be determined based on future uses. Businesses are planned to the front of Holman Road without causing problems for local roads. Next. The requested zone change, with the requested change in zoning will allow the applicant to create jobs and generate tax revenue while providing the community access to affordable products and services within walking distance of their community. Their water service is available from Moon Gate Water. How many, and in this area, has access to City of Cruces wastewater service. The staff analysis, we're looking at, there has been no evidence submitted that has, that there are endangered or rare species of animals on plat area. The property is located along a minor arterial road and is surrounded by a variety of land uses, mostly existing of new residential development. And the applicant will implement best management practices that are identified, noted, and included in the review conditions required for the zone change. Next. Our staff analysis with the Plan twenty forty, looking at our goals and proposed zone change shall not be in significant conflict with the comprehensive plan or adopted or approved county plans and amendments thereto, including privately developed area plans that have been adopted in the, by the county. Staff believes that the requested zone change does meet the requirements of this section and is not in conflict with the goals. Goal G six point seven, support regional small scale businesses, including agriculture, as well as goal G six point ten, keeping money from leaking out of the county. Next. As well as action A six point ten, plugging the leaks in the sales and services, as well as goal G six point eleven, protecting and enhancing the county market for goods and services. Here we're looking at the decision criteria, the Miller criteria. The zone change will not cover and perfect a previous defective ordinance or correct a mistake. The applicant is proposing to develop vacant land for limited commercial development along Holman Road, which is mostly residential, and at least five other adjacent commercial zoned parcels. A significant change in condition justifying this change of zoning is residential growth of the surrounding area. Improvements being made to Holman and a significant increase in the new residential development. This request's zone change will be more advantageous to the community by providing retail and commercial services to the immediate area and is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. This zone change is not considered a spot zone. The zone change is not a spot zone as the property is point six five miles to the nearest commercial zone. The proposed zone change is in harmony with the surrounding area and will not change the culture of the community because the size of the property will limit the scale of commercial operations to provide community commercial opportunities to the nearby residents. The property is outside of any incorporated municipal zoning authority and was, is within jurisdiction of Doña County and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The request of this application is consistent with the requirements of the UDC, and as well as the zone change request for C two does satisfy three fifty two oh three D decision criteria for a zone change in that the zone change is appropriate and reasonably necessary to protect the public interest, and there is sufficient change in growth of the surrounding area. The improvements being made to Holman Road and a significant increase in new residential development surrounding the subject parcel. Next. The zone change to a C two zoning district would not be considered spot zoning. The proposed zone change to a C two is in harmony with surrounding areas and of land uses. The property size is eleven point three seven acres and will be of benefit to the community providing goods and services near and to and within walking distance of a growing community. The zone change will not be in significant conflict with the comprehensive plan of the goals and actions as stated before. Next. So our recommendation, based on the findings of fact, staff analysis and agency comments, staff recommends conditional approval of cases number Z twenty five zero zero eight. A zone change from D three, high density residential to a C two, community commercial. Zoning objectives to allow for a limited commercial development that will serve as a buffer to Holman Road and the residential area to achieve appropriate zoning for existing utility infrastructure in compliance with zoning requirements of UDC with the following conditions. Moving forward with the phases five and seventeen of Inspiration Heights, staff recommends that the back-to-back cul-de-sacs do not comply with the spirit and intent of the UDC and recommend that these phases be redesigned to create road connectivity within the existing phases of the subdivision. As well as the land use impacts on the transportation calls out network connectivity for increased roadway connectivity, improved walkway connectivity, and increased non-motorized travel. Community development recommends designers to increase pedestrian foot traffic throughout the rest of the Inspiration Heights subdivisions, phases five through seventeen, to connect pedestrian traffic to the C two zone. This concludes my presentation.
Questions of staff?
Hey, Will, can you go back to some images? Go to the zoning map if you could, please. Right there.
Do you have questions of staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question. The conditions that you have listed there about the back-to-back cul-de-sacs, that seems to pertain to the residential portion of the property that is not included in the eleven acre piece. Is that correct?
Correct. So the zone change for Inspiration Heights moving forward with the zone change for this commercial development, that development's losing its grandfathered status, so therefore community development wants to take advantage of the fact that they're losing the grandfather status to then for us to look at the subdivision, which was approved in oh seven, I think it was, to increase connectivity, which is attached to the commercial development today.
Okay, yeah, I see. I mean, it seems to me like, that's like a separate issue from what, what this is. This is a zone change for that eleven acre piece. Those conditions seem to address some issues with adjacent property.
That is correct. If anything, it's a part of Inspiration Heights because this entire subdivision, this is the, it is the entire Inspiration Heights subdivision, is what I'm trying to say, and therefore the commercial development is attached to this development. And therefore, if we can get in there and increase flow, increase traffic, connectivity that's going to be attached to the commercial part, then that's what we're trying to do.
And I fully understand your reasoning behind this and everything. It just seems to me that that has been attached to this when it actually maybe should be a separate issue that's dealt with separately.
Understood, great. And that's.
I don't know, I would welcome any other comments and commissioners if they see it that way or.
Could you, Will, go to the subdivision plat of Inspiration Heights? I think it's the next image. That one right there? This image?
So, Mr. Chair, this area in question is a part of the Inspiration Heights subdivision, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, and this will be addressed at the subdivision phase as well. But we just wanted to have it on the record because the subdivision was created under the ETZ regulations. And then when we adopted the UDC in twenty seventeen, we really focused on connectivity, walkability, creating livable communities, and staff really doesn't see that type of development in this subdivision. Back-to-back cul-de-sacs does not create connectivity at all. And so we're requesting that they basically just punch the cul-de-sacs through and create traffic flow and sidewalks and allow the residents to walk to this commercial area as well. But that's just our recommendation.
Thank you.
What a cul-de-sac. Well, first of all, is there going to be any, well, I'll ask the engineer when he comes forward. Are those cul-de-sacs big enough to turn for fire suppression?
Mr. Chair, yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Acosta, yes, they are.
Other questions? Did we hear from the applicant?
Bill, I understand, I understand what staff is recommending. It seems to me that you can, you can make a comment about access to the commercial development because that's tied directly to the rezone. In other words, you want increased access from pedestrian access in particular from the subdivision to the commercial zone. I understand that, but I don't understand how you justify, although I think it's a good idea. I don't understand how you can justify saying that you want to increase connectivity in the subdivision when it's an approved subdivision, and that increased connectivity won't necessarily have anything to do with the commercial rezone. It all, it sounds like you're trying to redesign the subdivision.
It is, yes, I, we do understand that. And by that recommendation, it is a recommendation just to increase the connectivity, and unfortunately by saying just to punch it through, you are changing the entire design. I think, not even I think, it's more that we want the conversation to occur that this development is part of a subdivision that butts up to another subdivision, and we're planning something that's not connected to each other. And we want to take advantage of this opportunity, opportunity to mention that, and if there is more conversation about that, then we would. And if there is more conversation about that, then we would like that. Again, the commissioners do have the option to change our conditions as well or to make additional conditions. But it's just, I feel like it's a really good, we're at a really good point right now of the development that we want to increase that. And that's, I'm fumbling my words now.
Were, were the 11 acres a portion of the original subdevelopment?
This is always correct. This has been set aside for a development.
So it's not included in the original design of the subdivision?
I'm going to let the applicant answer that question. I don't know enough of that yet.
Because that would mean, that would indicate that you're already changing the original design by adding, by making that commercial. Open the door.
Correct.
Let's hear from the applicant. Do we have anybody signed up?
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Zach Libin, 1121 Birch Drive, Los Cruces, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Zach Libin with Libin Underwood Engineering and Surveying. Here on behalf of the Thurstons and Moon Gate Water Company. As noted, this, this zone change, this is the perfect map. This zone change does impact that small piece of Moon Gate property down in the south and then that strip of the Thurstons property along the west of Inspiration Heights. That area there is intended for bonding related to this subdivision. And what's been found is, and what we're looking at here is the master plan and a phased map of the master plan. And so that was preliminarily sized for bonding and there was lots of other considerations at the time. This has been an existing master plan for some time. What we're, what we're dealing with is that not all of that area is needed for bonding after more final calculations. And so the, the zone change would effectively allow for portions of that to be commercial, but that won't all be commercial. And it also allows for the lift station at the north end and the Moon Gate Water Company property at the south end to be in an appropriate zoning. The subdivision and the bonding and the design will still 100% pond all the generated runoff per the UDC and there's, there's no limitation to that. The, the, the portions of commercial activity will, won't limit the ability to have the appropriate bonding. This is the, the west side of Inspiration Heights is noted. And one, one point of clarification is that phases three and four have approved preliminary plats are in construction by Mr. Harlow Dynick. But five is currently finished construction. Six and seven have approved preliminary plats. And so those aren't necessarily flexible. But when it comes to the connectivity and the preliminary plat process of the other phases, the Thurstons are welcoming discussion on connectivity and connecting the cul-de-sacs, some of them, all of them, whatever, whatever seems best with staff at that time when it goes through the preliminary plat process. So not trying to amend this master plan here, but at the time of preliminary plat for each phase, we can work out what needs to be connected, what makes most sense, where a cul-de-sac makes most sense or doesn't. And certainly value staff's input in terms of the walkability, that kind of connectivity, and having proper thoroughfares. People do like living on cul-de-sacs, but also understand the need for connectivity and good transportation, the walkability and trails and such too. And so as those future phases get through the preliminary plat process, it'll give a lot of opportunity to address those, those issues. Whether or not it's contingent upon that, that's, that's the plan, is to work through that with, with staff when it comes for preliminary plat discussions. Some, some promotion of the idea of the commercial property there is that some limited commercial uses out here will allow for some walkable services to the, to all these houses that are getting built out there, provide some of this to grow with some services along with the houses in this part of the county that's growing like crazy. And it also allows for some, just some good planning to allow for some of that as it continues to grow out that direction. It also allows for a transition from Holman Road, which is a minor arterial and will continue to get busier and busier over time. Allow for that buffer between the minor arterial and that residential development there that's already master planned as Inspiration Heights. So, so with that, I think my, my only conclusion is that all the, the bonding will still be addressed. All the future master plan drainage issues will be worked out with the, with the Flood Commission. That won't be restricted by this zone change and just adding to the tax base of the county by having some of this well-planned growth out in that direction. So would that stand for any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair? Holman Road is classified as, what kind of a road?
A minor arterial.
Has then been a, does that trigger a TIA on that?
So the commercial uses there aren't defined as to what they're going to be yet. When those are proposed, then issues like the driveway placement, acceleration and deceleration lanes and TIA's or STA's come about based on what that use actually is. So if it's gonna, it's not going to be an event hall. But if it's going to be an event hall, that might trigger a different type of driveway than a barber shop might. So that, those, those will come about with the development of each one of those commercial uses there. And there's only going to be a few. But those commercial uses will, those, that design and that process with staff will trigger what kind of traffic analysis and driveways will be required.
And the next question I have is, but you'll take care of that though, right?
Yes, sir.
On the TIA, if it, if it gets to that level?
Yes, sir.
The other, it says here, engineering. Who, who would be, who's going to be responsible for the owner and maintenance of holding ponds, grubbing and so forth?
At, at this time, those ponds are going to remain privately owned and likely as part of an HOA, but they're, they're remaining privately owned by the, by the Thurstons and part of that overall subdivision development with, with an HOA or not, they're not county maintained. Unless the county would be willing to do so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, you had a question before.
Zach, staff's recommending some kind of increased access from the subdivision into the commercial property. Do you know if the Thurstons had a problem with that pedestrian access? So they don't have to drive around onto Holman to get into that, that commercial development?
That is a good question. I, I guess I hadn't been posed that question quite that way. So I, we hadn't thought through, it, it is flexible, as you can see, like Phase 9 there as an example. That, when it comes in for preliminary plat, could allow for something that, that provides better access to that commercial as that develops or the commercial could be further on the north end or where the road already is. So it's a good question. It's, it's doable.
So the, so the commercial runs from the north end of the property all the way to the south end of the property?
Yes, sir.
So the question would be, is there a way to arrange pedestrian access in the northern half and the southern half? Is the southern half built?
This, yes, sir.
It is.
So one, two and three and five are built. Four is being built by others. Six has a building permit already.
Okay. So, so you're, so we're basically locked into the site plan on the southern residential area where it intersects with the commercial, but we have a lot of flexibility on the northern side. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And, and where that commercial activity actually takes place, whether, which corners it is or, or how that works, will help determine where that connectivity makes more sense or how that can be done.
Other questions to the applicant? Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Oh, Mr. Chair. I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to try to narrow it down to one. There's a project just north on Holman Road, right? For flooding, am I correct?
The Flood Commission-
I think it's done by the, by the state or maybe the-
I, I think it's your Dona Anna County Flood Commission that's, that has several improvements to flood issues in the area. And, and for example, that strip through the middle was once envisioned to be part of those solutions in, in current conversations with the Flood Commission. It's not sure if that's going to work out the way originally planned because that was 20 years ago and things have changed. But the Flood Commission does have projects and this intends to be in cooperation with that.
And the other question I have is water. I guess the city or Moon Gate Water, right?
Yes, sir. It has, it has Moon Gate Water.
And they, they have adequate amount of water to supply that subdivision, right?
Yes, sir.
And then what is, just a question. How did they, how does the city acquire so much water for some of these subdivisions? Are they stacking water somewhere or what's going on? You're an engineer. You can tell us.
I can tell you that these mutual domestics and Moon Gate Water Company or Not a Water Company, City of Los Cruces, developed these water rights over time, both through proving of their planning for, for need for the water and from their, their existing uses and historical uses of the water. And so those are established by the Office of the State Engineer, how much water they have and then whether or not they have to acquire more, whether they can receive water through their future planning.
Let me interrupt you for a second. The, the state engineer always says, there's plenty of water, no problem. And for us, we need more information, just we have plenty of water. It's a concern, you know, safety in general for the public, right? Fire flow. So, just a question.
So, so Moon Gate Water Company, for example, as all the entities do, they have both documentation of their 40-year water plan and their consumer quality reports showing that they're meeting the required EPA water requirements, their water quality requirements, and that they have a 40-year water plan with the state engineer showing that they have a plan for the future, that they have enough water to serve their, their service area or how much they do have and how they'll continue to grow with that. So they, they have available documents on both their, their future water planning and their current quality.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else we need, wish us to comment on this case? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll look for a motion.
I see you smiling, Mr. Thurston. Good question, huh?
No, no, no one signed up, so. No one signed up, right?
Mr. Chair, let me take a crack at this motion. Based on findings of fact, staff analysis and agency comments, we recommend conditional approval of case number Z 25-008 with the following two conditions. And I'm just going to take the first condition that staff recommends. In the spirit of the intent of the UDC, community development believes that the use of cul-de-sac moving forward for Phase 5 through 17 decreases traffic flow and connectivity to the residents. Land use impacts on transportation calls out negative network connectivity for increased roadway connectivity and improved walkway connectivity and increased non-motorized travel. Therefore, the applicant will work with staff to implement this. Number two, provide access from Phases 13 and/or 9 to the C2 commercial property.
Do we have motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Lear. Questions or discussion on the motion?
I second the motion.
Well, I had it by, I had the motion by Commissioner Zerniak and a second by Commissioner Lear.
Right.
That's correct?
Yes, correct.
Commissioner Odranga?
Yes.
Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Good morning, Chair members of the commission. So the map before you, excuse me, are the building permits that we issued for the month of May. We issued nine new single-family residential and two commercial. And the two commercial permits that were issued were an accessory building for a church. And then in Santa Teresa, we also issued a substation for a solar facility. And then what is not mapped is we issued five additions to single-family residential. We issued four access permits to cell towers for commercial. And then 21 mobile home installation permits. 20 of those were on private land and one was in a mobile home park.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. You mentioned the one down south, 701 Highway 9. And what did you say that was for?
A substation for a solar facility.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that, because I saw 551 acres. That seemed like a-
Yeah, that's for the entire solar-
For the solar array that put- Okay, thank you.
And so they're just building a building, basically. Okay, any further questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Okay, staff input?
We did reach out to Jerry Pacheco and he is available next Thursday, or the, the 26th to give a short presentation. We do have two cases that morning, so I figured we'd have him come in around 10:00 AM.
That's fine.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, and then just a heads up that the county commission passed a lodger's tax for short-term rentals that is scheduled to take effect July 8th. So we're working with the clerk's office, the treasurer's office and to iron that process out. But what we're doing on our end is identifying the short-term rentals that are on the Airbnb websites and we're reaching out to them to get them registered for their businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commission input?
Mr. Chair, so I've got a question about the criteria for approval. I, I don't think it adequately addresses commercial or industrial evaluations. So when we, when we, when you do these evaluations, you have potential number of homes, population, I mean, those are, those don't apply- I mean, those are, those don't apply at all to commercial industrial. But we don't address the impacts specifically enough, in particular, traffic. That's one. Then, there's a criterion that says need for new commercial or residential activity. Applicants aren't asked to respond to that. Staff answers that question, and I don't think that's right. The applicant should justify what the need is. In the previous case, it says need for commercial or residential activity and the zone change will allow the applicant to have a commercial business for an RV park and electric charging stations. That has nothing to do with the need. And then, under potential water and sewer needs, it says water is available from Donaiana Mutual Domestic Water and Wastewater. Doesn't say anything about sewer or septic. And the one about J, implementation of best management practices, that's a throwaway. I don't think there's ever been a case that we've had where it didn't say they were going to implement best management practices. I don't think that's an evaluate, you could put it in there and require it from them, but we don't evaluate that. They just say they're gonna do it. And so, I think, just in general, we should take a look at these and see if there's a more specific way to evaluate, in particular, commercial and industrial development.
Yeah, we can certainly add a phrase to ask the applicant to project their water and sewer needs. It'll be more specific rather than general.
Yeah, and how do they justify the need for commercial or residential activity? How do they, the question is, how do they justify it, not staff? Because staff has always justified that for them. I don't think that's your job.
Well, you know, on follow-up to that, Janine, the DRC, do we have an engineer that's in charge of the engineering department right now or not? Because there's a lot of questions here that kind of very vague.
No, we still are recruiting for the engineering supervisor and, well, they just actually reorganized, so it will be a part of the public works department. So, there will not be an engineering director. It'll just be a public works director in charge of engineering.
Because I mean, that person should be certified engineer, right?
Yes.
And so, in the DRC, a lot of these questions should be answered right there on the spot or discussion on it anyway, right?
Well, a lot of these cases don't go before the DRC. Subdivisions do, but minor zone changes don't go before the DRC. It's just major developments.
So, if somebody wanted to challenge that, well, we don't have a certified engineer running the department, right? Who's responsible for that?
Oh, yeah, we do have a contractor. They are contracting engineering services out, do I believe, Wilson, Wilson and Company? And plus, we also get assistance from the flood commission. They have a professional, a few professional engineers on staff.
A lot of questions should be, when we're up here, it's gonna, it's difficult to make, to ask questions because it's kind of very vague, especially today, you know? It was a hard choice, but anyway.
Okay.
I actually kind of agree with Commissioner Sernyak in regards to the following up and the commercial projects like that, that, you know, best practices and so forth. I know we, we had approved a couple of months ago, a parking facility on Borderland Road for semi trucks and I passed the other day. And now they've got a sign there that now it's a sales yard. You know, they're selling the actual semis out of there. So, it kind of, you know, makes me think that, I don't know who regulates that or what, but I was a little concerned because we had only given the permit for them to park trailers and now there's, you know, signs saying that there's, it's a sales yard for, you know, semis and large commercial vehicles and so forth. So, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll send our code enforcement staff out there because I recall it was strictly for storage.
Yeah, I thought we had prohibited sales.
Right.
And Janine, as Holman Road, I don't know if any of us have gone that far up, but when you go north on Holman Road off of 70, right? There's a lot of development going on over there. And I'm sure that there's gonna be an interconnect between even Delray Boulevard going back north, or I mean, east. I think we need to do something to, on Holman Road. And there's some areas there that when, when there's a lot of rain, I know for a fact you can't cross that road. You have to go off the road to get to the north side or even the south side. And I know that there's, the flood commission, and I don't know who's doing that, but there's a lot of work being done over there. So they're burmaging up on heavy, heavy rain, you know, 500-year flood or 100-year flood.
And they are currently building some drainage facilities out there along Holman.
And that's why I asked a question on Holman Road, what's the level of highway is that?
I'm sorry?
Well, as we go, we'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Commissioner Sernyak, seconded by Commissioner Lear to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed, we're out of here.